Twenty first, two thousand twenty to order. It is seven oh eight P M. Everyone please rise. We have a proclamation honoring William Bill Kiner for all his years of service to the town of Enfield. Whereas William Bill Kiner was born on October seventh, nineteen forty-five in Bridgeport, Connecticut, to Max and Ida Kiner. Whereas Bill graduated from Boston College and earned his Master's of Education in the University of Hartford. Whereas Bill moved to Enfield in nineteen sixty-nine and taught in the Enfield Public School System for thirty-five years. Whereas Bill spent the last twenty, spent his last twenty teaching years as a history teacher for Enrico Fermi High, retiring in two thousand four. Whereas Bill served as a Connecticut State Representative from the town of Enfield from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen ninety-three, was the Chair of the Labor Committee and the Government Administration Elections Committee. Whereas Bill successfully fought for legislation to fund emergency response shelters for battered women and abused children, was a leader in passing the law that strictly penalizes offenses in drug-free zones around schools. Whereas Bill was a tireless advocate for the safety of correction officers, helped to pass legislative specific to the Enfield Correctional Facilities, and successfully required the funding for the Shaker Road Soccer Fields in Enfield. Whereas Bill's involvement in Enfield did not slow after retirement. He became a member of the Enfield Lions Club, the Friends of the Enfield Senior Center Board, volunteered at Saint Joseph's Residence, and eventually joined the Enfield Town Council in two thousand eighteen. Whereas Bill's past contributions include but are not limited to having been adjunct, adjunct faculty at, excuse me, adjunct faculty at Nuntuck Community College, at Saint Joseph's College, and in the Board of Directors of Network Against Domestic Abuse. In the North Central Area of Aging, the Connecticut Lottery Corporation, the Enfield Emergency Loan Fund, and the Director of Friendship House, and a volunteer for the Hilltop Farm and the Cancer Society. Whereas Bill now enjoys spending time on his boat, fishing, swimming, smoking cigars, and especially spending time with his lovely family, his wife Bobby, three, their three children and their spouses Melanie and Brian and Katie and Jason and David and Gina and his grandkids that he adores. Now therefore, I, Michael Ludwig, Mayor of the Town of Enfield, on behalf of the Town Council, the Town Administration, and the entire community, do hereby wish Bill a happy retirement from the Enfield Town Council and commend him for dedicating over fifty years of his life to the town of Enfield. We have a proclamation. I'll give it to Cindy, who will give to Bill. We start the regular meeting. Prayer by Councilor Sacala.
Thank you. Dear Lord, as we continue in the holiday season, help us find peace, goodness, and love during a time where there has been so much sadness and suffering, financial suffering, mental suffering, physical and emotional suffering. Guide us to be a little nicer, supportive, and understanding. Remind us to be better neighbors, friends, family, and human beings. Help us to remember the reason for the seasons. Amen.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please Suzanne.
Councilor Sacala.
Here.
Councilor Mandler.
Here.
You know what, Bill?
Here.
Councilor Mangini.
Here.
Councilor Mueller.
Here.
Councilor Riley.
Here.
Councilor Srazza.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Here.
Councilor Undire.
Here.
Councilor Bosco.
Here.
As ten members present, none are absent.
Thank you Suzanne. Move on to item four of the agenda, Fire Evacuation Announcement. Case of a fire, we have doors at the back of the building. Please go orderly left and right in case of a fire. Out the doors and into the parking lot. We also have doors to our left. Please go out the doors to our left. The first door is in a hallway, down the stairs, and out in the parking lot in case of a fire. Move on to item five, Minutes of Proceeding Meetings. Do I have a motion to approve special meeting November ninth, two thousand twenty? So moved.
Second.
Second by Councilor Mangini. Any deletions, corrections, or admissions? Hearing none. By show of hands, all those in favor? Or an aye? Opposed, abstentions? Ten in favor, zero against Suzanne? Moving on to the regular meeting of November ninth, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Councilor Mueller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Mangini. Do I have any deletions, additions, or corrections? Hearing none. By show of hands, say aye? All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Suzanne, ten in favor, zero against? Moving on to the special meeting of November sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Councilor Mangini, second by Councilor Mueller. Do I have any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none. By show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Ten in favor, zero against? The regular meeting of November sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. By Councilor Mueller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Mangini. Do I have any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none. By show of hands, all those in favor, say aye? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Ten in favor, zero against Suzanne? We don't, move on to item six, Special Guests. We have none. Move over to item seven, Public Communications. Would anyone like to speak for the public? You have five minutes. Carolyn? Welcome.
Better chair than.
You okay? Sorry. Is the light on Carolyn?
Now it is.
Welcome.
Dear Council Members, my name is Caroline Coctella, resident of Five Main Street in Thompsonville. I am seventy-eight, single, have no children, do not drive, disabled, and want to live independently as long as I can, and die in the home I was brought up in, not a nursing home. I am speaking today in opposition to the demolition of my home and the taking of my brother's property under the guise of eminent domain, and again request that you rescind your vote of five-six, two thousand nineteen, which assigned this action to the Connecticut Department of Transportation. As was stated previously, there is no reason to take this property because Connecticut DOT's own staff indicated in the same council minutes above that the South River Street Bridge can be replaced without taking the mentioned property. For over two years, we have asked, my brother and I have asked the town and Connecticut DOT staff to prove the Amtrak encroachment they claimed actually existed. Questions regarding town contracted surveyors went unanswered. Town Manager Bronson, by his own admission on five-six, two thousand nineteen, stated he did not approach Amtrak. My FOIA to Amtrak confirmed there is no encroachment. What is everyone hiding was the council given faulty information to make their decision in order to obtain their vote. I do not understand why there is such a desire to destroy our property for a sidewalk of a hundred and sixty feet that never existed on this street for well over a hundred and forty years, and has no safety issues reported for decades per my FOIA to Enfield Police. Furthermore, no sidewalk was mandated on either Bridge Lane, Bridge, or paving of Parsons Road near the boat launch entrance. If the town desires a sidewalk on the bridge, they have property that was acquired in the past which has never been utilized and can be used now. The poet John Donne wrote, "No man is an island entire of itself. Any man's death diminishes me because I am involved in mankind." Symbolically, this phrase indicates that we are all interconnected with one another, and individuals like the council make certain decisions which affect other people. However, in doing so, any decision must be based on accurate, reliable information, and not create unrealistic burdens to the people they serve. Please do not make me and my brother casualties of your highly questionable decision. Thank you for your consideration Caroline Coctella. Now I do have some photos of the property. You can pass them around. I only thought I had three minutes.
You have five minutes.
I didn't know. But you can pass them around to show you to everybody. I have ten copies. I just want people to understand that this property is well-maintained, and that's really all I have to say today. You know, I just want to make my point. You could pass this over. I use gloves because my. That's okay. Seventy-eight, I don't want to get COVID. I'd like to live a few more. I already had one friend die of it. So, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and your effort, and I hope you all have a good holiday, whatever your holiday may be. Thank you.
Thank you.
You should have this chair on all the chairs.
Can we do it again?
I agree.
We do it again?
Bill just got on. He needed to hear the proclamation.
Okay. All right, we'll do it after this. We'll do it after. Yeah.
I'd like to put my, my written thing in the minutes. Can that go in the minutes?
You can leave it on the table Carolyn. Yep, we'll make sure it does.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council at this time? Anyone else like to speak for the council at this time? Going once. I declare public communications closed. Moving on to item eight, Council Communications. Before we open up to the council, I know, so I apologize, I don't want me to digress, but Bill, I think we jumped the shark in the time. I know you're on now. Can you hear me sir?
Yeah, he's here. He's up.
So, Bill, we're going to read the proclamation, so, I know we read it to begin the meeting, but Bill wasn't on, but out of respect to Bill, I hope everyone doesn't, I'll use my, I'll use my council communications to read the proclamation, if anyone's okay with that? Okay? Bill, you're on sir. Proclamation honoring William Bill Kiner on all his years of service to the town of Enfield. Whereas William Bill Kiner was born on October seventh, nineteen forty-five in Bridgeport, Connecticut, to Max and Ida Kiner. Whereas Bill graduated from Boston College and earned his Master of Education from the University of Hartford. Whereas Bill moved to Enfield in nineteen sixty-nine, taught in the Enfield Public School System for thirty-five years, and whereas Bill spent his last twenty teaching years as a history teacher for Enrico Fermi High, retiring in two thousand four. Whereas Bill served as the Connecticut State Representative for the town of Enfield from nineteen seventy-seven to nineteen ninety-three, was the Chair for the Labor Committee and for the Government Administration Elections Committee. Whereas Bill successfully fought for legislation to fund emergency response shelters for battered women and abused children, was a leader in passing the law that strictly penalizes offenses in drug-free zones around schools. Whereas Bill was a tireless advocate for the safety of correction officers, helped to pass special, specific legislation specific to the town of Enfield Corrections Facilities, and successfully acquired the funding for the Shaker Road Soccer Fields in Enfield. Whereas Bill's involvement in Enfield did not slow after retirement. He became a member of the Enfield Lions Club, the Friends of the Enfield Senior Center Board, and volunteered at Saint Joseph's Residence, and eventually joined the Enfield Town Council in two thousand eighteen. And whereas Bill's past contributions included, included but are not limited to having been adjunct faculty at the Nuntuck Community College, at Saint Joseph's College, on the Board of Directors of the Network Against Domestic Abuse, the North Central Area on Aging, the Connecticut Lottery Corporation, and the Enfield Emergency Loan Fund, and the Director of the Friendship House, and a volunteer for the Hilltop Farm and the Cancer Society. Whereas Bill now enjoys spending time on his boat, fishing, swimming, smoking cigars, and especially spending time with his lovely family, his wife Bobby, their three children and their spouses Melanie and Brian, Katie and Jason, and David and Gina, and his grandchildren that he adores. Now therefore, I, Michael Ludwig, Mayor of the Town of Enfield, on behalf of the Town Council, the Town Administration, the entire community, do hereby wish Bill a happy retirement from the Enfield Town Council, and commend him for dedicating over fifty years of his life to public service. And Bill, we have the proclamation that Cindy will hand to you when she gets the first moment. So sir, you're on. I would give you a few minutes, quick, if you have a couple comments, Bill? I don't know if you can hear me? Bill, you're on mute?
No.
Bill, you're on mute?
Thank you. You know, I served two years on the Town Council, and I have to tell the public that the law of workplace economics is not in play here because regardless of the amount of overtime hours that members put in serving the community, the compensation is still zero. I think the only compensation that members of the council enjoy receiving is a thank you once in a while from the public. You know, putting partisan politics aside, both sides of the aisle, giving incredible, absolutely incredible amount of time to the community they serve. So now, I've got to say, Mr. Mayor, as a member of the Enfield community, and no longer a member of the Enfield Town Council, thank you for all that you do. You know, it was an honor, and indeed a privilege, for me to serve with ten members of the community, some of whom I agreed with, some of whom I disagreed with on occasion, but all of whom treated me with courtesy, and I appreciate that. And to Chris Bronson, and to his staff, and especially to Deb and Maya, thank you for your service for the council and to the community. And with that, I really want to wish all of you a very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday to all of you on the council, and the town manager and his staff, and to the community of Enfield, and thank you for the privilege of letting me serve for these two years. God bless all of you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you Bill. Merry Christmas, sir. I'll open up to anyone out on the virtual council communications. I'll start with Carl, and I'll go, Carl will go first. Do you have anything?
No, I'd just like to say that, Bill, I wish you tremendous health and success in your retirement, and you're a wise man because you know what? The most important thing each of us has is time, and only so much of it, and you've chosen to spend it with the people that matter most, and I wish you well and a Merry Christmas, Bill.
Thank you. Thank you Carl.
Councilor Riley, you have any?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a big thank you to Bill Kiner for all that you've done for our community and the many, many years that you've put in, and I hope that we'll see you around.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Fun in your retirement.
Thank you.
Councilor Sacala.
Bill, it was an honor to serve alongside you and to know you in a colleague way, not only as a student teacher, but I have a sneaking suspicion that even though you're retired, we're still going to see you out there doing the many things that you do for the community on a daily basis, so.
And I have to say that Gina Sacala was one of my A students. Thank you Gina.
So we'll go left. Councilor Mangini.
Thank you. Bill, there are no words. It truly was an honor for me to serve with you. I am at a loss. Again, Gina summed it up very nicely. We know and we are thankful that you will become a fabric of our community. We're very fortunate in that respect, and Carl also mentioned that your time is going to be spent in the most important way with your family, and may God bless you. Good health to you and happiness, and you know, it's a loss for us, but we're very fortunate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Cindy.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Bill, it's always a pleasure, always a good sparring communication with you. I wish you health, wealth, happiness, and the time to enjoy, and I look forward to seeing you walk and tucker.
Thank you Donna.
Councilor Mueller.
Hi Bill, congratulations. Enjoy retirement. Happy holidays, and I'll always remember you A three twenty-eight from nineteen eighty-six. We went back that far. Congratulations.
Wow, you're right. You're right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilor Hemler.
Bill, we were on a couple subcommittees, and I always enjoyed your company and your wisdom, and I'm definitely going to miss you. So, thank you and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you too. Thank you.
Councilor Bosco.
Well, Bill, it was an honor. I really enjoyed sparring with you up here a few times, and you know what? We always left as friends.
Yes, we did.
And that's how it's supposed to be. And like I said, it was an honor. I served with you, and I served with your son David, and he did a very good job there too. So, I just want to wish you all a luck, and I just think you're a lucky SOB because I should be sitting right next to you watching this from TV.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you did.
Councilor Anger.
Bill, thank you for being a part of this team. It was a privilege for me to work with you. We've worked on several committees together, and I've gleaned a lot from your experience, and some things will still stay with me. I wish you all the best in your retirement, health, and I hope you can enjoy some time to yourself. So, we'll miss you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you Laura, you too.
You know, Bill, to wrap it up again, thank you sir for all your service for the fifty years that you've been with the town of Enfield and state of Connecticut. I hope you enjoy your cigar while you're fishing, and I hope you catch a lot of fish.
I will, Mike. Thank you.
It's a great way to relax, and, but again, I, again, I think it's great that, you know, you've been able to go out in your own terms. I've enjoyed working with you for many years, and again, it went even before this, and so, again, I wish you a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and again, nothing but good health, sir.
That to you too, Mike. Thank you.
Donna, you want to, no?
First, I want to have everybody note that the lights are on on Palumba after five years. There's still a few that are out down by the ice cream place, but. Going to make a motion to suspend the rules and move items B one, B two, B four, B five, B nine, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, and P to miscellaneous and proceed to.
Motion made to suspend rules.
Second.
Second by Councilor Mangini. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. By show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Ten in favor, zero against? Moving on to item nine, Town Manager Report. Kasia?
Good evening, everyone. There is no Town Manager Report tonight. Thank you.
Moving on, no questions for Town Manager? Moving on to item nine, excuse me, item ten, the Town Attorney. Any Town Attorney Report?
Yeah, very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to keep my remarks limited. I just want to note for the record, there was a virtual trial that took place on Friday in the Hartford Superior Court. It was conducted by Attorney Maria Elston on behalf of the town, zoning enforcement action with regard to a property at three fifty North Maple, where the town has brought a case to cease and desist a junkyard that's been in operation there for several years. Property owner did not appear, had been defaulted, and nonetheless, the court took evidence. I won't get into the details. We can discuss that if the council would like in executive session, but it was a public proceeding, and so I just wanted the council to know that it's now in the court's hands. We're going to have a supplemental brief in forty-five days, and then the court will rule, and we expect the court will issue an injunction to force the cleanup of that property. And then looking ahead in two thousand twenty-one, we don't have a date yet, but I anticipate we're going to do a seminar with regard to freedom of information laws. It's my understanding that that's a service that's been put on by the town attorney in the past. I'd very much like to do that in two thousand twenty-one. Not sure if we can do it in person, depending on how things shake out, but if not, perhaps we'll set something up virtually. And that's all I had unless there are any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for the Town Attorney? No? Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Item eleven, any report of any special committees? Anyone out on TV? No? No reports to special committee? Moving on to item. Councilor Bosco?
It's more of a request than a report. I'd like to see what's going on. We haven't heard nothing on the trash ordinance, and, you know, it's starting to get, getting old sitting there, so I'd like to get that thing moving, so if we can get an appointment or a meeting put together, I'd like to be able to take care of it. Thank you.
Moving on to item twelve, Old Business. Item A one, there is nothing on page one. Moving on to the top of page two, two through fourteen, we have none. Moving on to top of page three, appointments by the Town Manager, B one through B twelve, we have none. Moving on to the top of page four, B thirteen through sixteen, we have none. Item C, Appointments, P and Z Commission stays on the table. Item D, Discussion Resolution of the Fire Districts, Collection of Distribution of Taxes stays on the table. Moving on to item thirteen, New Business. There is no consent agenda on to item A. Item B, Appointment to Town Council. We have an appointment, do we have a nomination? Councilor Mangini.
Yes, thank you. It is with great privilege and honor to nominate Mr. Bob Crisati for the council position.
Second.
Motion made second. Do I have a motion?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Deputy Mayor Susak, second by Councilor Mueller. All those in favor, closing nominations by show of hands. Opposed, abstentions? That was unanimous, Suzanne. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none. Roll call, please Suzanne.
Councilor Sacala.
Bob Crisati.
Councilor Hemler.
Present.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Councilor Bob Crisati.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Srazza.
Bob Crisati.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Four.
Councilor Undire.
Four.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
We have nine in favor, none against, one abstention.
Thank you Suzanne. Congratulations. I know you get sworn in. You and Suzanne, when you meet with Suzanne, you get sworn in. We'll see you at the next meeting.
Good afternoon. You're in. Call tomorrow morning at nine thirty.
All right, great. Moving on to item thirteen C, Appointment to the Town Manager, we have none. Item D, Under New Business, P and Z, Appointed, Council Approved, we have none. Items for Discussion, item fourteen, A, we have no consent agenda. B, B three stays on the table. B six, B seven, and B eight stay on the table. C, Town Manager Appointed, Council Approved, there are none. Item D, D one and D two stay on the table, and the rest has been moved to miscellaneous. Just bear with me and I'll get. Sorry, bear with me. Okay. Miscellaneous. B one, Board of Assessment Appeals. Do I have a nominee, please? This is for a reappointment.
Yes, I nominate Lori Longi.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Sacala, second by Deputy Mayor Susak. Do I have a motion to close? to close nominations? By Counselor Muller, second by Deputy Mayor Suzak. All those in favor closing nominations by show of hands. Opposed abstentions. That was 10 in favor, zero against. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none. Roll call please Suzanne.
Counselor Sacala. Lori Longi. Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sarrazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Lori Longi.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Pardon?
Yeah.
There's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you Suzanne. Moving on to B2, Commission on Aging, a reappointment. Do I have a nominee, please?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Kathleen Talarida for reappointment.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Muller. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
By Deputy Mayor Suzak, second by Counselor Muller. All those in favor closing nominations by show of hands. Opposed abstentions, 10 in favor, zero against. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Counselor Sacala. Kathleen Talarida. Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Kathleen Talarida.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sarrazo.
Kathleen Talarida.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Kathleen Talarida.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to B4, Commission on Aging, a reappointment. Do I have a nomination, please?
Yes, Marlene Hodginsky.
Made by Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Ungary. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mangini. All those in favor closing nominations by show of hands. Opposed abstentions, 10 in favor, zero against Suzanne. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Counselor Sacala. Marlene Hodginsky. Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Marlene Hodginsky.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sarrazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Marlene Hodginsky.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you Suzanne. B5, Commission on Aging, Reappointment. Do I have a nomination?
Timothy Slade.
Made by Counselor Muller, second by Counselor Ungary. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Second.
Second by Counselor Muller. All those in favor closing nominations by show of hands. Opposed abstentions, that's 10 in favor, zero against Suzanne. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Counselor Sacala. Timothy Slade. Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Timothy Slade.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sarrazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Tim Slade.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you Suzanne. B9, Library Board of Trustees, a reappointment. Do I have a nomination, please?
Yeah.
Counselor Mangini.
Thank you. I'd like to, excuse me, reappoint Deborah Fiori.
Appointment made.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Suzak. Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
By Counselor Muller, second by Deputy Mayor Suzak. All those in favor closing nominations by show of hands. Opposed abstentions, that's 10 in favor, zero against. Any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none. Roll call please Suzanne.
Counselor Sacala. Deb Fiori. Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Deborah Fiori.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sarrazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Deb Fiori.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you Suzanne. Moving on to item E, Request for Transfer of Funds for the Family Resource Center, $62,155. Sorry, one second.
Can we make a motion to waive the reading?
Yeah, is it right here? I'm trying to find it actually, sorry. Oh, here it is, sorry. I will, I'll just read the numbers. Resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to the Family Resource Center of $62,155 from the Resource Center. Appropriate funds, LEGO Community Fund USA, and full-time salaries of $62,155. Certified that the above funds are available on 12/21/2020 by our Director of Finance, John Wilcox, and approved by the Town Manager, Chris Promson.
So moved.
Second by Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Muller. Kasia, I don't know, anyone quick background on this?
Um, so good evening. So this is the funding that the town received from the LEGO Community Fund, and also carryforward of unspent funds from fiscal year 2020. So John and I are available for any questions. But in a nutshell, the funds will be used for part-time admin support, professional development. A big chunk of the funds is actually going to be used to improve the play area, outdoor play area at the FRC. So if there's any additional questions, both John and I are available.
Thank you. Anyone from virtual land, any questions? None? Anyone in the council? I just want to publicly thank LEGO again for being a great corporate partner to our kids in town, and just another example of it. So again, we thank LEGO for their donation. Suzanne, roll call please.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sarrazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you Suzanne. Moving on to item F, Fund to Miscellaneous. Discussion Resolution, Resolution authorizing the disposition of town-owned surplus personal property. Whereas the policy for the disposition of town-owned surplus personal property requires that the Town Council approve the disposition of surplus property valued at $6,000 or more. Whereas surplus property is defined as tangible personal property owned by the town of Enfield that has been determined to be unneeded presently or in the foreseeable future, or that is no longer of value or use to the town. Whereas the Department of Public Works has identified and properly listed on Attachment A as surplus property valued at $6,000 or more, whereas the Town Manager has reviewed the recommendations by the Department of Public Works and now seeks Town Council approval. Now therefore be it resolved, disposal of the property listed on Attachment A pursuant to the policy for the disposition of town-owned surplus personal property is hereby approved. So moved by Counselor Muller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mangini. I know John, I think John's on, or I'm sorry, Donald, I apologize, Donald. I don't see without the Bruins thing, that's what it is. So
How's that Mayor?
There it is. There it is. So Kasia, I'll turn it over to you and Donald.
I can just turn it over to Donald. This is just the disposition of the four pieces of property through online auction. So I'll turn it over to Donald for any further questions or explanation.
And Donald, I mean, when you give the explanation, explain, you know, the success of this program. I know it's, we've been doing this, I think, for a couple of years now, maybe even longer, I apologize. So just a little background so people know. Appreciate it.
Oh yeah, so any, any and all equipment that has either just served its purpose or had its time or whatever, we've been trying to auction them off instead of keeping them in our yard. We've been able to use those, those funds later on to keep purchasing newer equipment as well. It has been wildly successful. People will buy anything. And then when it comes to vehicles, we had a really interesting one where, one on South River Street, we had a car that we dug out of the ground that was like completely rotted through and it was just a special vehicle that somebody wanted. It came, it was just, it was just the most disgusting thing in the world. We sold it and we got some money for it and we moved on. So again, it is, it is really, really successful program. And there's been, I think upwards of, I think $30,000 or nearly $40,000 that we've got from just junk equipment that we sold off. So the four that I, that were on for today, the 2013 E350 is a magic carpet bus. It has been replaced and this one's not needed and it has very, very high mileage. The 1995 wheel loader is our, was our old, old, old loader that was at the yard. That's 24,000 hours on it, which equate to about 840,000 miles in vehicle mile terms. It has fuel injection problems, it has engine problems, and the steering needs to be replaced. And we cannot find parts for it because they don't make them anymore because of the age of the machine. And we also have to tear apart the axles to replace the brakes because the brakes are shot. They're called, it's a wet, it's a wet brake system. Counselor Bosco can expand on that a little later if he wants to. So that's for that one. The 99, that's our old Camel, our old Vector. It has considerable frame rust jacking where basically the frame is just splitting apart and basically in tiny little layers. It's a double wall frame, but it has rot also on the tank, on the interior and the exterior. And the 2002 Izuzu, that is the CP4, which was the old communications vehicle for the police department. It's not, it's not needed. We tried, we cannot be repurposed. We tried for a few other things and that machine is so altered on the inside for police purposes, we can't really do anything else. So those are the four on for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Kasia, anything else for opening up the questions?
I have nothing else to add. Thank you Donald.
So I'll start, anyone out in TV land, any questions? Uh, moving to the council chambers, Counselor Bosco.
Oh, this is a good thing. We used to auction them off at the town yard and got nothing for them. And back, oh, I probably gotta say, six, seven years ago, we started doing this and then putting the money right back into the DPW fund for when we do need money for trucks and stuff. And it's worked out very well. So I'll definitely be supporting it.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from members in the council? Agreed, Donald. This is a great program. And again, keep up the good work of maximizing our, our tax dollars, not just throwing away equipment and, you know, not trying to refurbish it. And to your point, one person's garbage is another person's gold. So I think it's a, it's great to see what they're actually, someone else can take something and turn it into whatever they, you know, they vision that, that piece of equipment could be. Again, this is a great program. And we appreciate you bringing this before us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Seeing other questions? Roll call Suzanne.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sarrazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
10 in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Thank you Suzanne. Moving on to item G in miscellaneous, Resolution authorizing the Joint Facilities Committee to serve as the Building Committee for the Hazerville Memorial School Roof Project. Sorry, one sec. Oop, wrong page. Resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby appoint the Joint Facilities Committee to serve as the Building Committee for the Hazerville Memorial School Construction Project. So moved. By Counselor Muller. By Counselor Mangini. I knew these are a series, the next resolutions of the, of the roof projects at Hazerville Memorial and Eli Whitney. So, you know, Kasia, I'll turn it over to you. And I think Jeff is on, so I'll sort of defer to you folks.
Thank you Mayor. So there's a few people on to discuss the next four items, all pertaining to the Hazerville Memorial School Roof Construction Project. We have Jeffrey Lanowitz, our Deputy Director of Public Works, Chris Cyclay from Construction Solutions Group, and John Wilcox. So I will turn it over. I'm not sure, Jeffrey, do you want to start or anyone in that group to go over this quickly?
Yes, thank you Kasia. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are just the steps to, you know, begin the CIP projects at these two elementary schools as part of our school construction grant procedure. We've done with Henry Barnard through multiple phases. And this is just the evolution of continuing forward with replacing our roofs across the schools.
Thank you, sir. I know you've done a lot of work. I don't know, Chris or John, if you have any comments or you'd like to make?
Uh, sure. This is Chris Cyclay. I don't have any comments other than this is the same process that we went through for the three phases of Henry Barnard with four resolutions for each one of these projects to be able to submit the grant application.
Thank you, sir. And John, before I open up the questions, any comments, John?
Um, I don't have any comments. I'm just available for questions if anyone has any.
All right, thank you, sir. We're going to open up the questions. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Now, this is a procedure that we've been using for the three phases. This is something that is a dedicated procedure that must be followed for the state in order to apply for the grant. The grant is a 70% reimbursement to the town. The town is granted this. It's based on demographics and needs and everything else. But this is something that we will be, we get from the state for roofs. So this is a way that, you know, we weren't able to go to referendum. So we're, we're back to doing it in phases. We're hoping that if we can get in, in January, we can get out to bid. We won't be just taking numbers off the state contract. We'll be going out with a full bid on the construction and perhaps we can get these roofs done at the Eli Whitney. I'm really hoping for two phases. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Suzak. Any other questions in the council chambers? Counselor Bosco.
Well, it may not be on this one thing, but it's going to be pertaining to all the next votes. When you do your contracts, please do something with the stone on the roofs. I mean, I sat in one of your meetings and what they were charging to get rid of stone on the roofs of the building is ridiculous because there's farmers and construction companies and stuff that will take the stuff for nothing. So if you just leave something in there, get a cost, but if you could find someone to take it, you're going to save a ton of money on just getting rid of the stone.
The only roof I believe that has, that is a ballasted roof with stone will be at the Hazerville Memorial. And we can look into that, right Jeff?
It's just, I remember when I sat in one of your meetings, I don't remember what the cost to get rid of the demolition for the stone. And I know for a fact that we paid the contractor to get rid of it. And then they brought it to somewhere else and got rid of it for free. So the only thing there is, is trucking involved. And there's a lot of people that'll take it. I mean, I, there was a stone, a building that they put a roof on in town, I took a whole bunch of the stone. And never mind, it's usually river rock. So, you know, we could probably even take some of it down to the transfer station and use it for landscaping around the town. I mean, it's, it's a good material. And I'm sure there'll be people lined up if they know that it's going to take the material for free.
Right. And that, that's at the Hazerville Memorial.
Yeah.
Not at all our roofs.
Well, the ones
I just want to make that clear.
The ones that have stone, you know, like I said, I think it was 130 bucks a ton we were paying to get rid of stone.
Right.
And they were, they got paid 130 bucks a ton and they gave it away. So, you know, let's try to save some money.
Jeff, I don't, you have any, I saw you, you have any comments or you're good?
No, I'm all set. But yes, we can definitely look into it. And Deputy Mayor Suzak has it right. The river rocks are only on Hazerville Memorial. The rest of them are inlaid in tar, so they're a little bit more difficult to get rid of. But I'm sure we can look into that when we go through the
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone out, the virtual end, any questions or comments? Seeing three heads shaking, anyone else in the council chambers? Kasia, anything else on this or?
Nope, no further comments. Thank you.
Roll call please Suzanne.
Counselor Sacala.
Four.
Counselor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Muller.
Four.
Counselor Riley.
Four.
Counselor Sarrazo.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.[1707.26]
Thank you, Suzanne. Item item H under miscellaneous resolution authorizing the preparation of a contract document drawings and specifications to the Hazville Memorial School roof project. Resolved that the Enfield Town Council hereby authorized at a minimum the preparation of a contract document drawings and outlines specifications for the roof construction project at the Hazville Memorial School pursuant to chapter one seventy-three of the Connecticut General Statute submitted on December second, two thousand twenty by our Director of Public Works. So moved. Second by Councilor Mueller, second by Councilor Mangini. I mean, Kasia, I don't know. This is the continuation of the project. I don't know if anyone has any, I don't know if you, anyone has any comments from your end?
I think we are all set on my end for the Hazerville project with comments unless there's any questions.
Anyone else here in the council chambers? Any questions? Anyone out TV land? No? Suzanne, roll call, please.
Councilor Sikala, four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sforazo.
Or.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Item I, discussion resolution. Resolution authorizes the Board of Education to apply for roof construction grant for the Hazville Memorial School. Resolved the Enfield Town Council does hereby appoint the Board of Education to apply for school construction grant for the Hazville Memorial School roof construction project. So moved. Councilor Mueller, second by Councilor Mangini. The only comment here Kasia'd have is just so the public knows, the board, I think, is having a special meeting tomorrow night to approve this. So this will be, I think Chris is on, this will be ready for early January, correct, from the timing?
Correct, yes. Board of Ed has a special meeting tomorrow night to review and approve the Ed Speck's whole project. Correct, so that we can submit the first week.
Perfect. Just so everyone knows the timeline. Kasia, anything else?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Any questions from our councilors out on TV? None? Any questions here? None? Roll call, please, Suzanne.
Councilor Sikala, four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sforazo.
Or.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Item J, discussion resolution under miscellaneous authorizing expenditure for the Hazville Memorial School roof replacement project resolved at the Enfield Town Council hereby authorizes the funding in a project of six hundred and seventy-three thousand for the Hazville Memorial School construction project. So moved. By Councilor Mueller.
Second.
By Deputy Mayor Suzak. Kasia, I don't know if John wants to make any comments or we're good. I just want to make sure I open it up.
I think we are all set unless there's any questions.
Any questions from anyone, our councilors out in TV land? Seeing head shakes. Any questions from anyone here in the council chambers? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Suzanne.
Councilor Sikala, four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sforazo.
Or.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
Ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Now we do Eli Whitney roofs, so the same process that we just went through in Hazville Memorial. Again, item L under miscellaneous discussion resolution authorizing the preparation of contract document drawings and specifications for Eli Whitney School roof. Resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby appoint the Joint Facilities Committee to serve as the building committee for the, I'm sorry, I apologize.
K, we're on K.
I'm on, sorry, Suzanne, we're on item K. Sorry about that. So item K, discussion resolution authorizing the Joint Facilities Committee to serve as the building committee for the Eli Whitney School roof project. Resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby appoint the Joint Facilities Committee to serve as the building committee for the Eli Whitney School roof construction project. So moved. By Councilor Mangini, second by Councilor Mueller. Again, same process that we just went through. Anyone have any questions? Kasia, anything you need to add or pretty good? We're good on this?
I don't have anything further to add. I think we are good.
Any questions here? Roll call, please, Suzanne.
Councilor Sikala, four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sforazo.
Or.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Item M under miscellaneous discussion resolution authorizing the Board of Education, excuse me.
Sorry, L.
Excuse me, item L, discussion resolution authorizing the preparation of contract document drawings and specifications for the Eli School roof. Resolved that the Enfield Town Council hereby authorizes at a minimum the preparation of contract document, contract document drawings and outline specifications for the roof replacement of Eli Whitney School pursuant to chapter one seventy-three of the Connecticut General Statute submitted on December second, two thousand twenty by the Director of Public Works. So moved.
Second.
Mueller, second by Councilor Mangini. Any questions from anyone? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Suzanne.
Councilor Sikala, four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sforazo.
Or.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item M under miscellaneous discussion resolution authorizing the Board of Education to apply for a roof construction grant for the Eli Whitney School. Resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby appoint the Board of Education to apply for a school construction grant for the Eli Whitney School roof construction program. So moved. By Councilor Mueller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Mangini. Again, any questions from anyone? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Suzanne.
Councilor Sikala, four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sforazo.
Or.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Item N under miscellaneous discussion resolution, resolution authorizing the expenditure for the Eli Whitney School roof replacement project. Resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the funding in the amount of six hundred and seventy-three thousand for the Eli Whitney School roof construction project submitted on December eleventh, two thousand twenty by the town manager's office. So moved. Councilor Mueller, second by Councilor Ungary. Any discussion? Any questions from anyone? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilor Sikala, four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sforazo.
Or.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Item O under miscellaneous discussion resolution waiving bids for architectural design for the Eli Whitney and Hazville Memorial School roof construction projects. Whereas Eli Whitney and Hazville Memorial Elementary Schools have over eighty-five thousand square feet of roof in need of replacement, whereas grant funding is available from the state of Connecticut, which may reduce the cost to the town of Enfield by approximately seventy percent. Whereas the roof projects require an architect to put together Ed Speck's design detailed cost estimate and other items to apply for a grant. Whereas the Department of Public Works requested quotes from on-call architects and Hibbert and Rosa Associates LLC and found Hibbert and Rosa Associates LLC the most competitive. Whereas Hibbert and Rosa Associates LLC designed Henry Barnard Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three, which were all successful projects. Whereas the time is of essence to award the contract for architectural design to a firm so the town can apply for a grant to maintain the construction schedule of the summer of two thousand twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved, the Town Council does hereby find, based on the foregoing compelling public interest and in accordance with the chapter five, section eight D, that is therefore against the best interests of the town of Enfield to solicit bid for architectural designs for Eli Whitney and Hazville Memorial Road construction projects. Now be it further resolved, the contract for the architectural design for the above referenced projects is awarded to Hibbert and Rosa Associates LLC that the town manager or his designee is authorized to sign the contract documents and any amendments thereto submitted on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty by the Department of Public Works. So moved.
Second.
By Councilor Mueller, seconded by Councilor Mangini. Kasia, I don't know if anyone wants to comment on Chris or Donald or Jeff?
I can turn it over to Donald or Jeffrey to comment on this.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we did solicit a whole bunch of other bids through our on-call consultants, but the, this was, this came in considerably lower, and I just think it is absolutely in the best interest to pursue this instead of going with something else because it costs considerably more.
Okay. Sorry. No, go ahead. Sorry about that. Any questions from any, Chris, any comments?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Any questions from any councilors out at TV land? Kasia, anything else before I open up for anyone in the chambers?
No, nothing further to add.
Any comments for anyone in the chambers? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Suzanne.
Councilor Sikala, four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sforazo.
Or.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Item P under miscellaneous resolution waiving bids for owner representative for the Eli Whitney and Hazville Memorial School roof projects. Whereas Eli Whitney and Hazville Memorial Elementary Schools have over eighty-five thousand square feet of roof in need of replacement, whereas grant funding is available from the state of Connecticut, which may reduce the cost to the town of Enfield by approximately seventy percent. Whereas the roof projects require the coordination of state agencies, town committees and boards to put together Ed Speck's design detailed cost estimate and other items to apply for a grant, manage contractors during the construction, review invoices, and an agent looking out for the best interest. Whereas the Department of Public Works requested quotes from on-call architects and Construction Solutions Group and found Construction Solutions Group the most competitive. Whereas Construction Solutions Group LLC was our owner representative for the Henry Barnard Phases One, Two, and Three, which were all successful projects. Whereas time is of the essence to award the owner's representative contract to a firm so the town can apply for a grant to maintain the construction schedule of summer two thousand twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council does hereby find, based on the foregoing compelling public interest and in accordance with chapters five, section eight D, that is therefore against the best interests of the town to solicit bids for the owner's representative for Eli Whitney and Hazville Memorial Roof Construction Projects. Be it further resolved, the owner's representative contract for the above referenced project is awarded to Construction Solutions Group LLC and that the town manager or his designee is authorized to sign the contract documents and any amendments thereto submitted on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty by the Department of Public Works.
So moved.
By Councilor Mangini, seconded by Councilor Mueller. Kasia, I don't know if anyone has any comments?
I will turn it over to Donald again.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, it's the same process as the one before. So again, it was absolutely in the best interest to go this route and again, considering that the time, we really got to get this done and the prices came out really well.
Yep. No, great. Any comments from anyone out on the TV? No? And Deputy Mayor Suzak?
I just want everybody to know that these, you know, a lot of times they look at these and they say, well, we used to do this in-house a long time ago. Well, we may have, but we don't do it now. And when we contract out, which is what's best in the best interest of the project, that's also reimbursed by the state at a rate of seventy percent.
Any other comments or questions? The only thing, Donald, I mean, I think from a staff perspective, you know, we learned how to do this through the first couple phases on Henry Barnard. And it's actually, I don't want to speak for you, but it seems a lot more seamless than it was, I remember, when we did this about a year or so ago, or a couple, maybe it was a year and a half ago, whenever it was. So any other comments? Roll call, please, Suzanne.
Councilor Sikala, four.
Councilor Hemler.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Councilor Riley.
Four.
Councilor Sforazo.
Or.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to item sixteen, public communications. Would anyone like to speak for the public at this time? No, no one, no one wants to speak. Move on to seventeen, council communications. Anyone from out at home in the TV land? Any, any shaking heads? No, I'll say anyone?
No, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone here, Councilor Mangini, then Councilor Bosco?
Just very briefly, I know we all received an email or several emails regarding a poor animal, a cat, that unfortunately was injured over a weekend. And I understand, you know, police department responded that we are one of the towns that has animal control, you know, one of the best coverages. I appreciate that. But I'm still dismayed and disturbed that this situation occurred with this animal. And what I'd like to request is an investigation or a resolution or an inquiry from our PD as to how, going forward, we can avoid this type of thing. I know, you know, it was an accident and the poor animal thankfully was found. And it was a situation that did occur, but I'd like to get more answers on this, if at all possible. Could I ask through our mayor to maybe have our town just do a little bit of research to find out how, going forward, we can avoid this? Because, you know, it's one, you know, animal, but it could be more animals. And, you know, we need to take care of our animals. Thank you.
Gosh, I think that will be directed to you and Chris through me to you guys. I know the chief has answered, but if he wants to look at it again.
We will have the chief look at it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Bosco?
I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone, and I'll see you next year.
Anyone else? Councilor Hemler?
I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. See you next year.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Merry Christmas.
All right.
Happy holidays, everyone. See you in two thousand twenty-one.
Merry Christmas.
Anyone, anyone else? Oh, Councilor Ungary?
Yes, I wanted to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. And I think back in the day when three wise men followed a star, they say that it was when these planets lined up. It was Jupiter, Saturn, and Mars. They all lined up and it was like this brilliant star. And they followed that star and it brought them to a manger and they found the babe in a stable. And tonight, December twenty-first, is actually the Christmas star. It's the shortest day and it's the longest night. And tonight Jupiter and Saturn actually line up. And it gives us the Christmas star. So it's very fitting this week, you know, being Christmas week, the timing and everything. It's a beautiful reminder that even in our darkest times, that light will and has stepped in. It's a little foggy out tonight and it might be hard to see, but that light is still shining and wise men still seek him. And just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
It happens once every eight hundred years. So if you can see it, the next, next time around, I know some of you folks are really young, so I wish you the best of luck. And I just want to say in closing, the town is beautiful. Folks who have decorated their homes all over town, congratulations to every single one of you. I don't care if it's simply